No public comments? Any public comments? No public comments?
Yeah.
All right. Approval of the minutes for March 6 and April 3. I actually made some changes to the April 3 minutes, but I made it about an hour ago, so I didn't send them in yet. So I can tell you what the changes are. And we can approve them as changed, or we can wait till later, if that's okay. Okay. So let's approve the minutes for March 6.
I make a motion to approve them.
Great.
Second.
Great. Okay. Then for the April 3 minutes, hold on. The April 3 minutes, I had changed the name. I'll say the changes I made, and then.
Hey, Tavi.
I put in the first sentence had is on the Select Board Agenda. It just said Select Board. I made feasibility study presentation, the F and the S capital. And then the last paragraph, the last meeting of the Feasibility Task Force, I put in there. And then regarding the grant, Ms. Frankelini stated that Mr. Giano had written out the case for support. Ms. Frankelini, Mr. Belle, and Ms. Zomeck were reviewing it, because it had all trustees, and that wasn't the case. I changed, it was Nancy Burkert. I fixed the, her name, and I deleted some of the rest of that paragraph. And.
Which paragraph are you on?
Go to Ms. Frankelini reported that she met with the Illustrated Nancy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. But I changed her name. Her last name is Burkett B. Yorkate Erti versus Eckert. Okay? If you keep going down, I deleted, Mr. Belle suggested that the trustees and friends are well-prepared to respond at the town meeting. And I just fixed a sentence up about the policies. And we can either vote on that now, or we could change this. It's up to you guys. And I would send it out. Want to wait? I'll send it out.
I think we should just go ahead and approve them.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
April 3 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I guess we had to be all in favor approving the last minutes. All in favor approving our 6 minutes.
Aye.
Okay. Forgot about that.
Completely out of order.
Okay. Oh, completely out of order.
I'm gonna send that to Mayano.
Yep, I did it. I essentially, while you were at school or driving here, so.
Okay.
As I said, it's totally my fault. I didn't get through it.
That's okay.
All right. Next on the agenda. Okay. My trustees report. This is the last meeting for Deidre. So I would like to give Deidre a very big thank you for being with us for three years, for getting recruited at the garden, as with Mark. And Sue, it's a good place to recruit good people. I would like to thank you for being a trustee and for really helping us with the MOU, with the friends, for the library building committee, because I know that's really critical. And this does free you up to help with the library building fundraising committee and all your financial expertise. So I would like to thank you. We will miss you, and you did a great job and really made us look at some financial things in a new way, because I don't think we look at them all the time. So that's my first report. The other is all mixed in with my planning for the annual town meeting in the warrant article. So there's been a small group of us that have been meeting, and it has been Jamie, myself, and Steve Gass, John Londa, and Tavi. And then we met with a couple of other people to bring them in for the town meeting to get input. John Londa was a facilities person for the town of, some town in Massachusetts. But he's built numerous buildings, and he has been invaluable for this project. I mean, just really understanding technicalities. So we actually had Scott come in from the firehouse, and he came in and gave his review, Scott Deering, about.
Jeff.
Jeff, sorry. About what's wrong with the building. And basically, if we were to renovate, we would lose at least 50% of the basement space, because there is no plumbing down there, and there's no electric down there. And when, then, and there's the egress is his biggest concern, because you can't get out. There's a fire, you can't get out. And he went around and did a bunch of other things that really made it seem like if we redid, if we had to replace the roof, he would press that we don't get an exception to the 30% rule and make these changes. He suggested we get Davis to come in. Davis is the new building commissioner. And Davis spent a long time with us. And Davis came in, and Davis is about six foot, I don't know, five, maybe. His head almost reached the top.
What's his last name?
Walters.
Walters, Davis Walters. He said we would have to get rid of the top three shelves, two to three shelves of the bookshelves downstairs, because you need three-foot clearance from the sprinkler heads. And the sprinkler heads cannot be mounted on the current ceiling. You would need to get rid of the ceiling and the subfloor. And Davis said he's not speaking as a building commissioner, because we didn't get all the permits, or we didn't have the actual drawings, but as a contractor, someone who has done this a long time. He was very concerned about the water system, about the egresses, about the, even the steps that go downstairs now, they're not big enough for handicap access. There's no rails are incorrect. Like, there's so much more wrong than we even thought was wrong, which was comforting in one way and scary in another way.
Well, is it safe to still use the basement?
Is it safe? Yeah. It's still safe within code.
With all the stuff they're finding.
Well, I think, you know, there's no sprinkler system.
That's not legal.
For a library, that seems a bit crazy, doesn't it?
For this day and age, right. And, you know, there was just a building.
It's not up to current code.
It's not up to current code. It's up to code from the 70s. So it's kept being grandfathered in. But Davis walked around and did a lot with us. The exit, if you were ever upstairs, you know, on the second floor where Tavi's office is, the exit to get out is through the balcony, which is really not a safe way to get out of a building. Then there was other issues with weight, and a lot of things we knew. So it was very good, because we had both of them, and they gave us a lot of stuff that we could talk about. And then today, we just met with Scott Zinke, who is someone in the town who used to be a DPW, in DPW for 20 years, and general contractor. And he had never been to the library before, or once. He's not a library goer. But it was great, because he basically walked around and said, you need a new library. Like, this was not even someone that's a heavy user of the library. But he just even called out things, like upstairs on the second floor. It's all uneven. Like, there's hazards just everywhere we didn't even pick up. And he picked up right away that the building was built to, not to commercial standard, but to like house, a house standard, because the boards were not big enough. And the joists weren't great. I mean, he, and having John there was also great, because they could talk joists and boards.
And Scott Zinke?
Yeah. I can send you his spelling.
Okay.
Because they could talk that, and I just went along with it. So I think with that, we then met, and we have a plan for the town meeting, and who's gonna, oh, and Tracy Sally has always been part of this. And for the town meeting, who's gonna speak, we're gonna have, Tavi is basically, is gonna speak, because Kim has asked all the direct reports to be up at the front and to speak on behalf of the, any issue that comes up, which I think is great, because in the past, you used to have people run from the back to the front, and this way they'll be there. And in the town warrant, ours is written as it is. If you read the first couple of pages, there's a letter from Kim, and the letter from Kim actually has a different number in it than our number. We're up to 37.5, and Kim says it's 45 to build. So we're gonna find out why, just so we're, you know, and it might just be because it's down the road, she thinks it's. So all that said, we're gonna have three people ready to speak at the floor in support of the library. If other people get up, that's fine, but at least we have three, because it's also our chance to highlight why we need a new library. You know, there might be no opposition, but this gives us everyone in the room a chance to hear the story. So that is our plan. The other thing we need for the town meeting is Jamie had printed up some handouts, that we're gonna need some people to come early to stand out front, to tell them why they should vote and what they're voting on.
I could do that.
Great.
I thought we all were kind of through that.
Yep. Yep. So that would be great. And then Tavi and I met with Kim, and she said, you know, we can, if the, once the warrant passes, if we don't get the grant next year, we can go for the full building. We don't need to do design first, we do all in. And that's how John did it, and that's how Scott said he would do it, and so that would be our plan of action. So we moved a lot ahead this past week. It's been a little much, but I think we're in good shape for the town meeting, because I go away Friday, and I don't come back until like the day before town meeting, so I think we're in good shape. Tavi, what do you think?
Yeah.
Okay. Good? Okay.
The postcards are still being sent soon?
Yeah, I'll talk about that.
Oh.
Mark?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sort of bowled over by how much work you've done. It's amazing.
I mean, Scott is not afraid of standing up to town meetings, so hopefully he'll be so moved.
He was very, he, he was really happy we invited him to come. I mean, he does make a lot of good points at town meeting. He's willing to, you know, state it as it is. And he was on the Firehouse Task Force. And so I think having that experience was also really.
Who was this?
Scott Zinke is his name? Scott Zinke is his name. He speaks up at town meeting a lot. He was on the feasibility study task force. And he has good experience.
Scott and Jeff?
Yep.
G U.
I'll, when we're done, I'll keep giving it. Okay. So that was what we've been doing. The other thing is, we did have our meet the candidates night. I thought it went well. I thought it went very well. I was, well-attended, I thought, 30 people. And then we had some people on Zoom. We have the, we now have it posted on the website. And I got a lot of, I would say, a decent amount of emails and questions afterwards, which was good. And a lot of thanks for having it, because it really is, otherwise, how would people know who to vote for? And Mark and Jamie did outstanding work, so. And Martha and Emily, who came up with the questions, really did a great job making them personalized. And I thought it was a really well-done meeting.
Should we have a letter sent to them thanking them for their official secretary?
I already, I, I emailed them the next day, that morning. So, and they were happy to do it. I think that that was really very well done. And I think that's it for my, next month will be my last chair meeting, so, excited also. In many ways. I think that's it for my chair report. Because Tavi, you're gonna talk about our meeting, right?
Yeah, with the grant update.
Okay. Great. Okay. Follow-up after annual town meeting, I want to put this out there. We're assuming it's gonna pass a town meeting. And then we're gonna get ready to have people sit at the library book sales for the library building. I can do most, I could do Memorial Day weekend. There will be a book sale then, because I think getting, we think getting the people in now, to tell them what's going on, we'll have some of the same word in Jamie had, but not about the bond. We have a lot of other pieces. We'll have a booth, we'll have a sign-up sheet, you know, sign up if you're interested in hearing about the library. It's a good way, sign up if you want a tour. I think there's a lot of summer people who don't know how bad the library could be. So just to start engaging.
Have a demonstration.
Have a demonstration. Don't jump here, don't walk there.
Look at that beam there.
Right. Exactly. But I think the more people we can engage this summer, and Memorial Day is a great place to get them. So, you know, I'll send something out to see if anyone else would like to join us sitting at the, at the sale, just to engage people. We're not asking for money at this point. I think it's just engaging them. And if they happen to say you're looking for donations, we could easily take some. So that's what's going up there. After the warrant is passed, then we will go ahead and start the Capitol Campaign Committee, Capitol Campaign Board, will be officially kicked off. But we're waiting until it passes to get that done. And then on that will be the next chair, vice chair, and treasurer, and then the friends chair and treasurer. And then someone at large who they're still open to talk. So that's all up in the works also. Now I think I'm done after town meeting.
Okay. I just had a friend today comment, I love the design of the new library.
Oh, good.
I think people still think.
Yeah.
That that's what it's gonna look like.
Oh, I know. The library, because it's always conceptual. It's not the new design.
Well, are you gonna address that at the town meeting?
If someone asks, Tavi will say.
Would you like somebody to ask?
No. No, 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 no. It's good, because I think if someone asked, Tavi could say, as it's been stated, you know, it's just a concept. I mean, this is.
Just to see if something fits there.
Just to see it could fit there. It's a feasibility concept. Yes, it fits. Yes, we can get the parking spots.
And it helps us figure out the price.
Right. Exactly. We needed the price and everything else, so. And if someone asks what's the tax implication, just so you know, we did get something from Scott back, but it's too early. There's too many variables out there, the cost, what the rate would be, how many years it would be off. So the answer is, we just don't know right now. It's all a variable. And when we go to build, we'll have a better idea of what the costs will be. So that's that. Any other questions?
No.
No?
Someone's doing great.
No? Okay. Good? All right. Deidre, your last financial report.
It has been a pleasure being your treasurer, and I hope you find someone else.
We do have someone else who's sitting in this room right now.
Oh, who's ready to go? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if that's someone else who has any questions they'd like to ask me, that would be fun.
That's someone else, did you? Sue. She said who the next treasurer is. Okay. Oh, you have to speak a little louder?
Oh, all right.
She can't hear you at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just said, good luck. And if you have any questions about things, don't hesitate to ask me. We're still considering things that may be easier, but that's all right. As far as the utilization rate, we're fine. We have two months to run in the budget year, and we're running at about 77% for both salaries and expenses. That is, of course, due to a vacancy on the staff, which will be made up, you hope, by May 17.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Great. So we should be, we should close out on, you know, on budget, and we should be fine. The only other thing, I see there's been some expenditures from the revolving funds and, and from the trust funds. Nothing major. We're still missing interest numbers, but the other ones are at $729,394.12. I don't see anything other than that that is particularly different, unless Tavi has something?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. What are the earbuds?
They, they are, they are for patrons. You know, we have playaways. And sometimes patrons don't have their own earbuds. And so they will occasionally ask. Not as often as they did, you know, in the beginning.
Yeah.
But we like to have some.
Oh, okay.
In stock, to be able to give them.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Next up, Tavi, you're next.
Yep. So just in addition to my regular report, I just want to report on, and that actually is a separate piece of it as well, the meeting that Joan and I had with Town Manager Kim Newman. We were discussing issues about the grant. So the grant is due to be submitted at the end of this month on Friday, May, by Friday, May 31 at 4:00 p.m. And so most of the grant is completed. The parts that are left to do, I need some electronic signatures, so I need one from Kim. I have to provide one, which I can do anytime, and Joan has to provide one as well, which we can do, and that doesn't take long at all. I am gonna need a PDF format of the FY '25 budget. I can't get that now, because that's the one that has to be voted on at town meeting. So, but the finance office, once that budget is approved, is gonna give me a PDF copy, and then I upload it onto the grant. Still being worked on by the finance office is the 2023-2024 operating budget worksheet, which also requires a signature from the finance officer or the town manager. That's still being worked on. I have borrowing and debt policies from the town, stabilization fund policies, free cash policies, and other financial policies as well, which I'm loading up into the Amplifund grant. Still being worked on are funding scenarios. It's a, it's a separate document. In other words, how you're gonna fund, scenarios for funding the project. And then, other than that, I just need signature page. There are a whole series of requirements from the Board of Library Commissioners. If you get the grant, you have to agree to, and it's seven pages of different things that you agree to. And so we're, we're gonna try to get signatures from the Select Board and from Joan. So we have that, that we still have to do. And then finally, the last thing remaining, and this does not have to be by the 31st, but by June 14th, the vote for the $150,000 has to be on an official, an official vote. It has to have some kind of a special stationary seal or embossed stamp. And that has to be mailed to the Board of Library Commissioners. And so, and that, that will be a completion of it. So I think, basically, all of the work so far in putting it together has all been done. It's just these few little pieces left to put in. And I think, since this is May 1st, I think we're, we're right on schedule. And so we hope to have the grant submitted prior to the deadline, and even maybe have a little bit of chance to just review everything, make sure everything's the way we want it before I hit the submit button.
Thank you, Tavi. It worked so hard.
Yes.
My pleasure. Well, and collaborative, too. The statement of need, so many people, trustees on the board, and Mark, you know, contributed to it, and I think made it much more of a narrative and much more of a story, as opposed to, you know, just simply the facts.
Points.
Which I, I mean, I had, I had the points down, the facts, but they rearranged it into a story. And Mark was, has done most of it, and Jamie was involved in it, and I think Joan and Steve.
I just scheduled the meetings.
Okay. But, but I think, I think the final product, I really believe all the parts of the grant.
It was great.
Which we have control over are gonna be really the highest quality that can possibly be. There's some other factors you just can't do anything about. And so, you know, rather than worry about those, we just wanna do the best we can for the part that we can control. And I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied that this is like a, it's gonna be a really fine grant submission.
Yep. And we have to wait, Kim wants to pass it by my Ford. So once my Ford approves it, then we get the Select Board to sign it. So that all come down because of the timing of town meeting. It'll be the last two weeks of May.
He's kind of slow.
Well.
So we hope we get it done.
Yeah. I don't think there's much legalese in it that he has to approve, but I guess there's a couple of documents. Because we're not changing any of the town documents. They've already been approved by him.
Yeah.
So I think there's probably only one section that he has to read, Pamela, which is not.
Yeah.
It's a section Mark wrote. He didn't make anything up, Mark, but, you know, that's the thing, he has to probably just read through. So the rest is pretty good. Tavi, anything else?
That's it.
Jamie, you know what we're gonna do? Jamie, you go first, and then we're gonna let Jerry go, then we'll do the policies.
Wait, there was a teaser. I felt like there was a teaser about hiring. Is that still not known?
You can't mention about the hiring. You made a job offer to the, someone?
I haven't made the offer yet. The offer is, is coming very soon.
You have someone in mind?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We are, we are, we've just completed the interviews, and so we're just reviewing right now, and then, but I actually have not made the offer yet. And so also, I'm sure, I would also need to get the paper signed by Town Management before I can actually say who it is.
That's safe, Tavi.
Yeah.
Okay. So Jamie, let's let you go on communications, and then Jerry will let you go before we do policy, in case you don't want to hang out for policy. It's not that they're mind-blowingly interesting, but, just in case.
He's gonna take that personally.
Oh, he's not.
March right out of here. So under the communication efforts for town meeting, so it's divided in between our electronic efforts and our written materials. And the, I didn't bring the whole spreadsheet today, because it's really boring. But the electronic stuff is being spearheaded by the Assistant Director, Kymy. And essentially, we're working very hard on making sure that anything that the library puts out electronically in between now and town meeting has the color postcard or the flyer, the two-page flyer that we've developed. So we're talking about social media accounts like Facebook, the weekly Wowbrary publication. And we're also, we have flyers that are printed out. So the staff is also handing it out at events, letting people know if they've got questions who to contact in regards to the Article 31. Then in printed things, the postcard, I know, is ready to go, and it looks like that it's gonna be given to the post office on May 3. So that's a Friday. And the logic behind that is that we don't know exactly how fast it's gonna go, but because it's paid mail, But because it's paid mail, recently, it's been moving pretty quickly. So, that means it would be in mailboxes that following Monday or Tuesday. Which is good, because that's a little less than a week before. And it's printed on white paper. It's not neon or hunter orange or anything. So, look for it in your mailbox and send me a message when you see it. So, then, the second piece is the flyer, and that's going to be handed out at town meeting. There's several hundred that have been printed in color. The third piece is the article that's being put in the newspaper. Yesterday, we were told that we would not be able to have it run in the Chronicle because of deadlines and also a policy that they have that they don't run anything relative to town meeting or political issues the week before.
I think your kids are leaving.
Yeah. Hi, Jack. Want to give me the phone? So, the week before town meeting, they don't let you do that, which is kind of a weird policy, because you think that's when all the letters would be in, that people would be seeing. But then, they came back to me last night and said that they have moved some stuff around, and they're going to run it. So, I really appreciate the Chronicle.
They came back and said what?
That they're going to run the communications piece about Article 31.
Oh, okay.
So, it's great. They might not be able to get the image in that we wanted to go with the piece, but we'll see what happens space-wise. And then, Ryan from the Chronicle did follow-up with me today on that to make sure that I knew that it was in, and so, it's great. So, it's running a little bit early, because it's in this week's issue. But it's, you know, it's earned media, so it has huge value. We're also reaching out to the Cape Cod Times, the Cape Cod or the Province Town Banner, the Cape Cod Independent, and a couple of other outlets to get them to try and pick it up. And I think that's, oh, so we're working on the display in the front. You've all seen that, but we're also going to print out a slightly larger version of the flyer and put that in key places about a week before. So, lots of traffic coming in. If anybody has any questions, you know, send them in my direction or Joan's direction, and keep the dialogue going.
Okay. I'm still going to get a wireless speaker, sorry. Because it's not working.
Yes.
We're doing a wireless speaker.
I need a volunteer to take about 20 of the color flyers and post them in places in town. Some you can walk around, others you'll have to drive to. Would anybody be interested in doing that project?
I'm happy to do part of it. I mean, I did stuff with candidates tonight, but I didn't, I went to the post offices. They posted one for me at the dump. They did snows, but, and I put something up at Friends. I don't know where else to go.
It's a hot chocolate sparrow.
Yeah.
I did the chocolate sparrow. But the bulletin board is so crowded.
I know.
You know, I feel.
That's all right, yeah, it's all right.
Well, I can, I can do some. We can split up a list.
I'll get you the list, and then the flyers are behind the desk.
Okay.
At circulation.
Okay. I mean, should they go up now?
No, about a week before.
Yeah, they'll come down.
Yeah.
A week before?
Town meeting.
Vote or it's town meeting?
Yeah, so next Monday would be great.
Next Monday.
Okay.
Sure.
As long as it isn't four.
Pretty soon. Now, it's pretty soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Jamie. And Jamie hasn't been busy at all either, so I do want to thank Jamie. A lot of work. So, any more communication?
Nope.
Okay, Jerry?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. With news from the Friends. The Friends, the first item, Friends of, the Friends' major donors' party will be held at the Cho on June 6th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We identify, define a major donor as anyone donating $100 or more to the Friends. We invite a trustee's member to speak at that meeting on ongoing events at the library, as well as updates on the new library build. So, we can, I think, identify that person. Great. On the technology side, the Friends are evaluating a new membership management and giving platform. We have something right now that's baked into WordPress, which we use for the website. But it's really sort of clunky to manage and to quickly review giving history of a person over time. So, we're looking at rather inexpensive, and I've reached out to other not-for-profit organizations in the area to see what they use, as well as I posted a message to the library Friends List Serve in Massachusetts and got back an overwhelming response in the first day. So, I'm pretty much targeting an inexpensive system to put into place. And when we do that, I don't know. We just need to, you know, transition over from what we have in our current systems.
So, Jerry, would you be able, could we use that for our fundraising efforts for the library?
Yes, I believe we can. I think we can segment and, you know, put an attribute to course in and everybody's giving record as to, you know, where that, you know, where that money is intended to go. So, yeah, I've actually kept that in mind in looking at our options.
Have you looked at Little Green Light?
Yes, in fact, that's probably number one on my list right now.
Yeah, we started using it at Orleans Conservation Trust about a year ago, and it has been fabulous.
Yeah, great, great.
Just the sorting and the different, you know, variables.
What was it called?
Little Green Light.
Little Green Light. It's being used by a lot of nonprofits now for, especially if you're doing fundraising.
Yeah, that was the overwhelming responses that I got.
Yeah, that's a big favorite, you know, yeah.
And ease of use, and, you know, not terribly expensive. They really cost, of course, associated with all of this, but, you know, as a percentage of what we plan to raise, it's very, very small.
Right.
Book sales improved in the month of March. I don't have the precise percentages, but they have been encouraging. They've been flat for a little while, but they're actually moving on an upward path. And as we head into the spring and summer, we expect that to increase dramatically. Winter is always rather tough with weather and weather events on weekends that prevent people from coming out. Lifetime Learning just ended a successful winter-spring session. We had 490 people registered for a total of 1,519 courses. Some of those 490 registered for multiple courses. 107 of those 490 were new people, were newcomers. So, we have, again, we have a separate Lifetime Learning database emailer, and we hope to, with Little Green Light, to bring that segment in with an indicator that they're Lifetime Learning, for example, and keep them on the, at least our contact rolls going forward. Lastly, financials. The Financial Advisory Committee met with Cape Cod Five Investment Account Managers on the 17th of April for our first quarterly review. A decision was made by the committee to move about $200,000 of our investments from the socially responsible investing account, which is not doing very well, and you're probably, if you're reading the financial news, that's a trend right now. We did not close, we're not closing out the SRI investment. We just reduced it greatly in the event that we rethink this and want to put investment money back into, back into that account. And that concludes my report today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jerry, and I was talking to Tracy. She said you need a lot of books, so I'm just putting that out here. If anyone has books that they would like to donate to the library, they're in search of books. For the books there.
Thank you. She did remind me as well that I just bought.
All types.
Well, they're, they only pretty much want books that are only within the last couple of years, though. They don't want everything out for books.
Yeah, I think we need to put ourselves in the place of the buyer and, you know, what buyers are looking for and what, you know, children's books are really, really very popular.
She said she just did, she got a call from someone that lived in Harwich, I think. She went to the house. The person was tied to Orleans somehow, and she got all these books, and some weren't great. But she said there was a bunch of coffee table books that actually sell very well, like higher amounts of money. So, you don't want to give the dregs of the earth dusty books, but anything you have that, you know, maybe hasn't been, has been holding up your coffee table for a few years, not opened. But if you have anything or know people that might have some books.
Okay.
Jerry, I think I speak on behalf of Jamie and myself to thank you for the Friends for the Candidates Forum.
Oh.
Yeah, so very good.
Yeah.
What did you say?
What did you say? I want to thank you for the Friends for the Candidates Forum.
I'm going to get us a speaker. I'll try, I'll do it. Jerry, would you mind giving copy units to Darcy so she can use them? That'd be great. That'd be actually easier than just in there.
Since I don't have dinner plans, I'll stay for the policy.
Okay, thank you. All right. There'll be food for them.
That's right.
All right, Mark, and policy, sorry, and I didn't mean to make it not exciting, but.
Well, this is the last group, so it is exciting in its own way.
Very exciting. And I do thank you for doing well with these policies. I think we now are the best policies on earth.
Okay, so the first one in our packet was the Exhibitions Policy. This is primarily relates to the Marion Crane Gallery and the Marion Crane Gallery Committee. They had, if you weren't aware, several different policies in the manual. Because they fall under the trustees, they needed to have their policies documented, so that's what's going on here. Tavi has, has or will be sharing it with the committee, these with the committee for their feedback as well. And I should also say that Tavi and I have met, and I've incorporated changes that came up in our meetings for all of these policies. So, the Exhibitions Policy, I don't know if anyone has any feedback on that.
I have a question. Tavi, when there is a theft of a piece of art, who's responsible if it's stolen?
Well, it's a town building, so it's the town.
So, the town took responsibility to pay for that piece of artwork?
No. It's just.
I thought it says that you're not having to be responsible.
It's, I mean, it's, as far as responsible meaning like reimbursing or anything like that, no.
Right, no, not at all.
So, not for the value of the painting or the photograph or whatever. That's amazing.
Well, it can't be insured if it's not town property.
Right.
It's complex, because it's private property.
I mean, you sign, you know, one of the issues that came up in both of those cases is you sign a form, an artist signs a form, and they basically say that, the form says, and they agree to it, that if anything happens to your property, you will hold the town, and you will hold the library, and all the board members and so forth, not responsible for it. In other words, and, and.
So, there's a big waiver.
Yeah, and I mean, we have, we have also, I mean, we stress with them that if you have any artwork that is truly valuable, either to you personally or of a monetary value, you might want to think twice about having it in there, because, you know, it could.
It's a public building.
Not only that it's stolen, I mean, it could be defaced, it could be damaged.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering about that. Okay.
The only, maybe this is picky, and maybe it's, maybe I'm interpreting it incorrectly. On page one, the third, the fourth one.
Exhibits who are presented by.
Are represented.
Represented.
Sorry. Good catch.
Hey, show, show, represent.
That's right.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Do we ever charge a fee for artists to hang? No fee?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we're not allowed to, I mean, that's the, that's the whole point, is like, we don't charge for any meetings or programs or anything that we have, so.
So, is the Crane Gallery, obviously, they're going to have the same one, I assume?
The policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is essentially their policy that was in the manual as it now exists. They had reviewed the existing policy. I combined two into one, and they're going to review it to see if it all looks okay. So, but it is, it's essentially their policy. They shouldn't have any problems other than that I collapsed into one.
Yeah.
Any other feedback? Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I think it's on the next one, it's on the next one.
Okay. So, and I, what, what they had really combined sort of exhibition guidelines and their bylaws into one. So, I pulled out their bylaws to mirror essentially what we have in a much smaller way for our bylaws. And so, that, they now actually look like bylaws that you would expect for a committee that is essentially a town, under the town. So, that's what's going on there. Yes?
Does that, it says homemade food items are not allowed.
But that's on the Exhibitions.
So annoying. Now, why is that?
It's a Board of Health.
Board of Health. Is that like an old COVID thing?
It's been that way for a long time.
Yeah, you, when I fill out the paperwork to get a perm, to get, actually, we get a permit to be able to have that. It says all, all the foodstuffs have to all be prepackaged.
So, it's okay to get, you know, transpired from the stop and shop?
It's, so it's sealed, like, you know, it's sealed packaging.
Yeah, if it comes in a package and it's bought in a store, it's fine. But any kind of homemade things or anything like that.
Is that on every piece of town property?
Oh. Um, I, you know, I don't honestly know that. I mean, I, I inherit, all I know is that.
It is, it is. Someone from the audience here, who knows?
So, it's, can you bring in fruit? Fruit?
Could you go to the bakery and buy cookies?
The bakery?
Yes, it's a license, yes.
Licensed fruit. It's commercial sale.
You know, I, I agree, but it just occurs to me when they had the unveiling of the Du- Daunion, somebody baked cookies and they served them, and I think that was at a Select Board meeting. So, anyway.
Oh, dear.
Anyway, but I agree, yeah. So, so, yeah. Okay, back to the bylaws.
Sorry.
Did you have a comment on that?
I'm on the next one, bylaws of the Marion Gallery.
Yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, so, I have a question. Do we need to put the date and time on? Because what happens if it changes? Can't you just say they're going to have a regular meeting once a month?
I can certainly do that, and in fact, I think that's what I did with ours to make it sort of flexible. I can do that. I think, I just, I think I got the sense that theirs has been pretty much that way for, since time began.
Well, it has, it has, it has changed.
Okay, so I will just make it more generic. Yeah.
So, you just take off the end of that sentence?
Yeah. All right. Okay. Anything else on that one? The Gifts Acceptance Policy, we had seen this before. I, at everyone's recommendation, I collapsed into this, the Art Gift Acceptance Policy, and made some other smaller changes to the document. But, and it is understood, I think, or we should understand that Mike Ford may or will have feedback on this particular policy as he would on some of the other ones. But I didn't know, I wanted to make sure we didn't have some feedback on it at this point.
I have one question. When you get a piece of art or sculpture, if it looks like it's worth something, do we have it appraised, Tavi? Never?
No.
The only thing we have appraised is the works that are currently at the library that like, you know, the ship hulls and the paintings and so forth, but, no.
When we say we're, the trustees are legally responsible for the management of trust funds donated to the library by individuals.
Yes.
But we really have nothing to do with it. The town handles it, right?
Yes, but we have a responsibility to oversee how they are spent.
Spending.
It doesn't have to do with the asset management itself. The town does manage the assets.
Okay.
And I wrote a memo on that, which I'll be happy to send to you. You weren't on the board when I wrote it. But it describes how the town commingles all the trust funds from all of the different organizations, like the COA has trust funds, housing has trust funds, and they have to be managed a certain way, and Scott Walker does it.
And what?
Scott Walker does it, the treasurer. So, if you have any questions about that, he's the person to ask. But, yeah, we are responsible as trustees for property and finances, so.
Okay. Okay. The deed of gift, this is something that we didn't have. It is referred to in that Gifts Acceptance Policy. But it's something that shows when we are given and accept something as, as a matter of record that would be kept in any files maintained by the library. And I definitely felt like we needed to have that. So, that's the purpose of this document. Okay.
One second. But this deed of gift, if someone was donating it and they want to use it for tax purposes, do they need a value?
They are responsible for doing it themselves. We do not do.
Perfect. And that won't be on the deed of the gift either?
Right.
The value.
That's their, their responsibility. The application.
The form, yeah.
Form for the Marion Crane Gallery essentially mirrors what they have now. And so, it's just been made into a form. And that, I don't think anybody has comments on that? Okay. Then, they also have a form for volunteering for the Marion Crane Gallery. This essentially mirrors what they have now. And then, we also never had a deaccession form. And this was something that we really felt was, it's come up with, from Pam and Sue in looking at the archives room about, well, what if we determine that something is not something that we want to collect? And this would be a way of recording decisions that were made and why, why they were made. And getting, in the end, I, we, Tavi and I think probably the town manager's signature on it, possibly Mike Ford's, we don't know at this point, but they will get this to review. But this is a way to have a permanent record of what was decided about something that was given. It is not for the purpose of when we get rid of a book or a CD or anything like this.
For anything? No, no.
No, it is not.
It says not for that.
It is not. It's just for something major. And when you think about it, primarily things that are in that room. If you wanted to get rid of the grandfather clock, if you wanted to get rid of anything like that, this is what that would be for, and it's a record of that. It's pretty standard practice in museums and libraries, of course.
Do we have one in the town? Like, because people have donated artwork to like this building and stuff. Do you know if they have one of those forms?
I don't. It might cause them to think about it, definitely. So. Yes, Jamie.
On the last line, it indicates this form should be retained as a record of the deaccessing decision. Do you want it saved by the library director or in the library director's office?
I can definitely have that.
Or digitally.
Yeah, whatever.
If you don't have files, you don't have space, so I would think it's a digital record.
Yeah. Is there anything that you've recently, in your memory, would qualify for this form? Or have you filled out this form?
No, I mean, we, we basically, well, the form didn't exist. I mean, so, I mean, the only thing we have done, and it's through the town, is that if it's, if there's any equipment that we have, it's supposed to be, you're supposed to put it on a form, and it's supposed to be filled out, signed by town management, and then the DPW comes and picks it up. But as far as like, you know, any artwork or anything, I mean, we haven't, as Pam and Sue know, we haven't gotten rid of anything out of that archive room for eons.
I want to talk about that a little bit later. But, wait a minute, what were you just saying? Now, it just went right out of my head.
If we've used that form or if we've deaccessed anything, any major things.
Yes, well, it went away, so hopefully. Yes, well, it went away, so hopefully it'll come back someday. Anyway, it was, yeah, they, um, oh, um, yeah, speaking of those kinds of things, like, we have a computer in the archive room and we have a very, very funny, the big old typewriter that was also a word processor.
Oh.
And, but they weren't the libraries. They were the person who used to do all the archive work. So I think we probably don't have to ask permission. I think we can just see if Staples wants them.
Right, right.
Now, if anybody, if we
But that's the kind of thing.
Yeah, if we know something is not
Yeah.
purchased with town funds and it doesn't belong to them, then that, that's nothing.
Yeah, Staples will tape back old equipment.
Yes, and as far, since we're on that now, I mean, we have some, some paintings that were done by John, what's his name? With the, um,
Murphy.
Murphy, thank you. And I think that we could use them very nicely for a fundraising. I mean, there's no way we can put them in the library, they just don't really have any.
Oh, you mean like a silent auction or something?
That kind of thing for the new library.
Well, we could ask John.
There are four of them, and he's well-known in town.
We could ask him.
You would want to ask him.
Well, I don't know, according to this, we don't have to.
Don't have to, we could, it's two different things. But I would ask him.
Right, I would ask, again, if he's still alive.
I mean, that form wasn't created when he gave them to the library.
Well, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, yes, it would be nice.
Is there anywhere we could put them up? Is there anywhere we could put these pieces up?
They're small. They're small, they're not little, but I don't, it might be better to just do it when we're ready to do a raffle or something like that.
Or save them for the new space, if that's possible.
What?
Yeah, I think, I, I would think that's something that
I don't, I don't think, I don't, well, it depends. Now, this is going to be an issue because there's all the Cummings stuff that we have all over the library now, the black and white. And I would imagine that we probably will want to keep some of those. So I have no idea what you want to do, but I just
Maybe we should just take a look at them and then, um,
And they're just scenes of the, of the paint, they're not
Are they oil paintings or they prints?
Yeah.
The oils?
You know, I'm just curious on that.
He has been a respected, longtime member of this community. He's been around here for a long, long time.
I know.
And I would be very careful what you did with them because it could, it could just not
Yeah, I would.
It would not be good publicity.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that that's the kind of thing that we could do with some of the things that we have.
If we asked John and said, these would be a great fundraiser.
Yeah, would you mind if you put these in a
Right, would you mind? I think that, I would do that.
In a silent auction, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That would be fine, but that's, that's something
And this form does say, was the donor contacted? So, I mean, that, that is part of the process.
But I do think also that it's something, I agree with Lindsay, that I might not just do now. It might be some, yeah, new library from a renowned person in town. And that, to me, is what Snow Library is all about, is the whole community and he's part of the community. So I would love to even see if there's a space in the current library.
Well, why don't we bring them to the next meeting and show you all?
Can do that.
Well, you could just take a photo of them.
Yeah, take a photo.
Take a photo.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here for the next meeting.
Okay, Tavi, you could just send us a photo, great, yeah, and then you could share with us.
I think, when I went to the library in Situate, I think it was not an, an special exhibition. I think it was a permanent wall of paintings that they had given, given to the library over the years. And it was a fascinating mixture of things. I assume they have some kind of selection policy for, for what they have. But it was a great blank wall that, near the front of the library.
Yeah.
If you go and visit them, it's worth looking at that.
Yeah, I did have someone else recently asking if they could donate something, artwork that they did. So I said, well, no, not right now. So I do think it's going to come up. We have a lot of artists in town, oh, we have a lot of artists in town. So it is something we're going to have to think about, the new library.
Lindsay got a call.
Lindsay, yes?
Oh, thanks, I was just going to say, I love that idea. I love the idea of having like local artists in a special spot where we could display them if people are donating art. That's really special and it makes them feel like this is, you know, their home space to do that.
Yep.
Exactly.
I agree.
Yep.
All right, so we don't have to vote on that. You'll just send us a picture, take a picture. Tavi can even take a picture, send it to us and then we can talk about it at my last meeting.
Wait a minute.
My last in charge.
Murphy.
And then, then the very last policy is the circulation policy, which we never had before. But we, Tavi and I worked through the, oh, I'm wrong, that's not the last one. Circulation policy does not exist now, but it incorporates everything that has been unwritten and understood by the staff and you as borrowers indirectly. But this documents it now.
I have one question. You don't talk about anything digital here? And digital loans are different than in-person loans because you can choose yourself 14 or 21 days?
21, yeah.
Yeah, you could choose 14 or 21 days for digital loans? So I was just wondering whether or not you had to just have something here about digital loans?
I can definitely add it.
And you don't make that decision, Tavi, that all comes from Clams, right?
Yeah.
Even if it was just that the digital part is from Clams?
Yeah.
If you look at the paragraph on the second page under children's cards.
Yep.
The last paragraph.
Oh, whoops.
Yeah.
That's where it's taken from.
Yeah.
Oh, Manchester?
You just need to be renewed.
Yeah, thank you.
Man, you see?
While we're in that section, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So under the second paragraph, parents of children under 12 years of age may ask for and obtain titles of materials that their children have checked out. Records of cardholders aged 12 through 17 are confidential. Where's the, what was your source for that?
Manchester.
That was Manchester as well?
I've seen it at other libraries too, but it was Manchester.
And we're, you know, as custodians, do we, do we have the ability to say to a parent?
You can't.
You can't see that information? And that's something Michael Ford will have to help us with.
Has, have you encountered that, Tavi?
Somebody 12 to 17, is that what it is?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it has come up. But usually we're able to resolve it without, you know, violating any policies or anything like that.
So is a pre-existing policy this or is this new?
This is totally
This is new.
Okay.
What was the other policy?
Well, we didn't, we didn't have it, but I mean, it wasn't a written policy. I mean, basically, we have always encouraged there to be communication between, you know, parents and their children so that we don't get in the middle of it. But, you know, when, when someone comes up, I mean, it's just, it's a general policy. When someone comes up and says, you know, I want to know what my spouse is reading or I want to know what my children are reading, or I want to know, I mean, we encourage them to do the asking, not to give it to us because we're not going to provide that information. I mean, we, it's a, it's a, it's a private record. I mean, what, what people check out on their account doesn't get disseminated to other people. And I think that's one of the reasons why. I mean, we've encouraged that, that's why, you know, you can, even if you're uncomfortable, like, we have the confidential corner, you can come to reference or come to the librarians and ask them something and we're not going to spread that information around. You know, so-and-so came and wanted a book on that. I mean, that's the, that's a big thing of the whole idea about that, you know, your, your, your information is private.
So you're okay with this revision?
Even at age 12?
Yeah, I'm okay with the revision.
12 to 17.
Right, you, Jamie, you have young kids.
I don't know. I mean, one of them turned 10 today, so not there yet. And, and the reality is that it does, it does sort of ring in my mind, like, I would, I would want to know and yes, as a parent, the communication with the child is paramount directly and not sort of involving the library in that. But if the library did say back, well, we have a policy that we don't reveal that. I just want to make sure that the library doesn't get it.
I will do some, I will do some more research and find out, you know, and have more background information. I did see it with other libraries, but I'll do some more research, be thorough about that age grouping and things like that. I mean, I'm thinking back to when I was 16. Would I want my parents to know what I, I mean, I was not reading anything that was questionable, but definitely
Put that out there.
Just to put that out there. But I mean, would I want my parents to know what I was reading? And, you know, I don't think I would have, I mean, but
Yeah, but that's
As a parent, would you have wanted to know what you were reading?
I mean, I was, I was reading stupid, I was reading Thomas Hardy. I was reading, you know, all the classics, so, yeah.
I think, I don't know, it's interesting. So Mark, if you do more work on it, I mean, I feel comfortable, you know, because my kids are older now, but curious.
Just a question, does the ALA have published guidelines on this subject?
Well, they, they have always advocated that, you know, you shouldn't be giving out information about anyone else's card information, their account information. So, and I was going to suggest too, I mean, maybe that might come up in town council review then.
But are children's library cards considered an accessory of a parent?
Well, yes, and that's why there's the age listing in there because, you know, for some of them, for the, for the children under that age, you know, the parent has to sign.
Right.
So.
I'll do some more research, but thank you for raising that as a question.
One other thing that's a little picky, but you can now also get puzzles. You can check out puzzles. I don't know if there are two weeks or a week or
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So I guess they could just be added to that first lineup, books, periodicals, puzzles.
Two weeks, no renewals? Even for a big puzzle?
I know, and I think I'm going to do this in two weeks. It doesn't happen.
I, I don't, I don't know what the policy is, but
Thank you for raising, yes, Steira.
I have a question. Under borrow registration requirement, second, before the second set of bullets, where applicants may present the following. Do you mean one of the following or do you mean all of it?
One of.
Okay.
One of.
Yeah, ours, I thought maybe
Yeah, we, we basically just, anything that has a photo ID, we're very, so anything in that list is fine.
Yeah, ours, it just, it's like you have to have everything.
Yeah. This is why we have multiple eyes looking at these things. So, anything else? And then the library of things, also a new policy, but also a new part of the collection. And one of the things that I learned from Tavi as the library was implementing this collection and, and borrowing was that libraries have that liability statement because there are some things that you can borrow through the library of things that you could get hurt using.
Oh.
And, you know, so it's not chainsaws or anything, but you could get hurt using some things. So that's a pretty standard wording in, in other libraries' policies.
Well, there's a new item that I just saw that's in this collection, a metal detector. We might want to put a clause in here that says that if they get a gold coin
Has to go to the library.
Up near the widow.
It's got to go to the, to the library.
That we get 50%.
Exactly. Very smart.
Has anybody else looked recently?
The telescope, though, you have to have training from like somebody here. You have to have gone through a class before you're allowed to borrow it, right?
Well, we, we originally, I mean, the way other libraries have done it, we originally wanted someone who is an astronomer, an amateur astronomer, is a member of one of the astronomical societies to do it. But unfortunately, that didn't become possible after a while. So Kaime, who knows how to use the telescope, does a training. And the reason why we've always gone along with that is because if you're not getting the training, you're probably not utilizing the telescope as well as you could be. So it's, I mean, we're, we're doing it basically for the patron. And this is what other libraries do, and we kind of just, I mean, that's kind of what we do with all of these. We, we see what other libraries are doing and we just kind of follow along because, rather than reinvent the wheel on it.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Amazing job.
Another wonderful job.
Uh, yeah, do, um,
Or are they still being revised?
Well, I, I put vote on there. I mean, the thing is, we're waiting to hear from town council and, I don't know, so it's, it's, it's up to you if you want to vote on them pending approval of town council or, you know, just like voting with these added changes in it as well. So whatever, I, I always put vote on there, as I say, because if you decide to do it and I don't have it on there technically, it's not a valid vote. So, but if you want to hold off till
I'd love to vote. And if everyone's comfortable with that. And just, and yes, pending approval by town council.
Great.
With the revisions that we've talked about.
Yes.
Second?
Okay.
Okay.
Can I second it? Who moved it?
I think Mark did.
You just said I want to vote. I don't, I guess I can't second it. Who wants to second it?
I can second it.
Okay.
Okay.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
We have to go around by name because Lindsay's on now.
Lindsay Edman, aye.
Aye.
Sue.
Sue, aye.
Mark, aye.
Geirdra, aye.
Jamie Ballinger, aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mark, you've done a phenomenal job. People are going to be copying our policy, sir.
Okay.
You have another thing, Mark?
No, I do.
Oh, yeah.
I just have some updates on old business.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Is this old business? If yours is old business, I defer to you, Pam.
I don't see anything on the internet.
I don't know if it's old business. All, all I'm, all I'm going to say is, I'm now, I have now moved all 17 boxes of the postcards and I've gone through them and there are some that we feel are just kind of stupid to keep. But there are some that are, are rather popular.
Okay.
So I made these, I was going to put them on that table, but that table seems to be quite full. These are the types of ones, if you can see them from there. I mean, this lady lying on the sand with her head on the rock, I don't know, you know. These are the ones with all the people in them.
These are the ones you don't want to keep.
And, yeah, these are the ones that I thought really, they don't have them up, up in the, in the, the little place where they have them on the, on the reference desk, yeah.
Can we give them away at the book sales?
Well, not those. But these are the ones, houses, a lot of the houses. There's the Mayo Duck Farm, I don't know if you guys ever remember that because you're not old enough, but, you know. And, and there's the Captain Linnell House where Cummins was born and grew up. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that we're, that we figure we're going to keep. And Jenny was agreeing with that, that, that they seem to like the, the pictures of the houses. And so, yes, what I'm going to talk to Tracy about and the friends is how we can put these together. Now, the other thing, I don't know, I, I hate to have you looking at all those ones because they're silly. But the other thing that I thought was kind of interesting is this, this roll-up is a race in Town Cove. And I thought, why not give the, one of these to the yacht club? I would think that they might like that. I mean, at least I could suggest that they might like it. Now, there are a whole lot of them and I could put this one in a, in a frame, you know, and, and take it over there because they don't lie still. But I thought that was kind of fun. Oh, sorry.
How many of those you have, Pam?
There are a lot of them.
A lot?
Oh, yeah, whole box.
Oh, okay.
But they're not all that. Some of them are this guy, I don't think I brought one of those. I'm not sure if I, no, I don't think I brought one of those. But it, it's just that they could be, if, if people were interested in them, they could be very easily framed just from a Christmas tree shop signed frame, you know, that kind of thing. And, but it would have to be
They're all the same, but
Yeah, I just brought them all because I didn't want to throw them away. So anyway, these are the ones that I want to keep, if you've got all the other ones that I don't want to keep. So anyway, these are the ones that I want to keep, if you've got all the other ones that I don't want to keep.
I'm wondering if the yacht club has the same issue with too many pictures, like, would they want one?
I don't know, but I thought it would be worthwhile going there. And then if they want to, if we want to sell those again for fundraising, that would be kind of fun, especially putting it in the yacht club in some manner and saying, "Hey, we have more of these," you know, would anybody like them? I have no idea what people would want.
Right.
But they...
So you're going to put this package here together?
I think, I think, I've got to talk to Tracy, Tracy about how she wants to do it and how we put it together, whether they're individuals, whether you want to put them in groups. I would think individually might do better. But I mean, on every single box is the number one three five oh. So I think she had one thousand three hundred and fifty of these done with every single of these pictures. So, you know, as you say, it's, it's questionable as to whether that amount would ever be sold. But, I mean...
Well, I wonder whether or not, if we tried to sell some of them, like at the book fair, who sold it at the table about finding...
She was going to take some, but she said she's going to do that.
Yeah, and we put it at the table about find out more about the building, I mean...
But a lot of these aren't, not, anything to do with the library.
Those should be, those should be part of the, of the assortment.
Well, you can just sell them for a dollar or something.
That's what I mean, a whole pack. At the bookstore, raising a little bit of...
Oh, I would raise, no, twenty-five cents a piece.
Yeah, that kind of thing, which would be perfectly okay to do, I think. And Tracy indicated an interest in that, but I think I need to get in touch with one of the people who really does all the, a lot of the work with the, with the book sales.
Well, I'm saying, is it for the May one? Maybe I could just sell it with, when I'm sitting at, with the booth for the building.
Yeah.
She doesn't have time to think about it for now, for, for May. I just maybe
Sure, that, I mean...
Take some there, Pamela, and see if we could just sell them.
Yeah.
I think some of them are so cool. Or not this one.
I wonder if other places in town...
What?
Oh, sorry, I was saying, I wonder if other places in town, such as like the, the Cho, or something, might sell them?
Well, the Cho is very, very funny. They haven't been interested in taking much of anything, so I don't know what they're, what they're doing.
I love this one.
Let me see.
The flooding one.
Well, everything that you see here, we have Marcher pictures of.
We certainly do.
They're buried somewhere, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should talk into one of them, so...
Yeah.
But I think those, I think the ones that we don't want, I'm not quite sure how to go about it. I mean, I hate to take it to the dump and just throw it in there.
Well, maybe we have a section that we could put at the book sale for free, and maybe a section for sale.
Right.
I don't want these to be for sale, though, that's...
No, 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 no. I'm saying some of those could just be for free. Why not?
Well, because I think they're a good source of... What about taking them to town meeting? Could you use that to drum up interest in the whole library project?
That's not a bad idea.
Well, there's that too. But I mean, we'd have to put up a poster with some of these on it, I think, and just when you're handing out the flyers, you could, people could look at them, I don't know.
Stuffing postcards in people's pockets.
Hurrying favors at town meetings.
The thing is too, that in the front hall, you know, the hall before you go into the gym, there's always some kind of a display.
Well, you know, the other thing...
But that may be a little too late.
Nobody's... It might be hard. I think maybe at the town event in August, where they have the town...
Block party?
The block party, if we got to, if we have a library table this year, we can give a lot of these out. Because I think it's nice, when we have them, you did a great job going through the archives, we're cleaning up, we want to... It's one of those things you don't want to throw out, but...
We still have, still have a ways to go.
No, but at least, I mean, first you started it, which is better than we've been, you can actually walk in that room now.
Yes. But I, I think that some of us are going to come back. Some of the big stuff is going to come back in, but we're not mentioning it. So wait till somebody says, "Oh, we need to bring this back in." So anyways, yeah, I...
No, you don't have, you have too much stuff. And why'd they make these in the first place?
God only knows. I mean, the poor lady is not really...
They're the Cummings.
Mental Cummings.
Yeah, they were to just, you know, drum up interest in the Cummings collection, a library's collection.
They were a series of exhibitions.
They were a series of exhibitions. In fact, each one of the four volumes, I gave Mark one volume of each, the one through four. They were all retrospective exhibitions, and they had the paintings, they had the pictures, the photographs
Yeah.
displayed, and they were to, you know, make people aware of this collection, archival collection that the library had.
And, you know, somebody's, "Oh, yeah, these are all for sale. We'll make all these postcards, they'll sell."
That's what happened.
Yeah.
Can I just point out two, two things, well, three things. One, my house is one of the pictures that he took. And I, all it said in the label is grandpa's house, because it was his, it was his grandfather.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I've studied it so closely because, you know, windows were made slightly bigger, you know, over the years and various changes. If anybody ever talks to you about, "Oh, God, you're making a huge library. We've never had a building that big in town." Look at the size of this building. It's a four-story building.
Maybe it was the pants factory or something.
No, that's, that's the Cummings, it's the Cummings block?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where the train was.
Right, so it's right...
Good observation.
It's right where CBS
Wow.
And The Sparrow is. And it's a gargantuan building, so if anybody ever gives us flack, we got to blow up this one.
Right.
And then the last one is, of course, the original library. This isn't the best picture because it's not exactly straight on, and it has a little blur to it. We were, we were told by our consultant last year, but if anybody ever says, "Well, you should have something historic as part of the new library," we can look at the face here and be able to say, because there's a few features on the other side that I think are very distinct.
You can pluck your quarter down and you can have that picture.
We have the plaque and the stairwell too, that was rescued from the fire too.
Yeah.
All right.
You can learn a lot from these pictures all the time. I know of seventeen boxes and stuff.
That's a lot of them.
Well, I want those back.
Oh, you do?
You separated them out, yes.
I just want to make sure that I have the...
Okay.
The sections.
Unless you want to keep that one of your house.
No, no, I've, I've, I've already got an image of that.
I'm sure.
Yeah. I don't think it was made into a postcard, yeah.
All right. Mark, are you done? Done, done? Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, Mark, over to you.
So, speaking of Cummings, I had a great meeting with people from the Digital Commonwealth that is run through the Boston Public Library, had the meeting on Monday, and they're very interested in the project. They don't anticipate having space on their schedules to start until sometime in the fall. We discussed a lot about the metadata, as they call it, for the collection, and Tavi provided me with an Excel document listing all of the glass plate negatives and the descriptions that are there, which would be very helpful. And then I was curious whether these four volumes had additional information that could be added into this spreadsheet. And I will take the time, now that I don't have any policies to work on, this will be my next thing to keep me off the streets, of adding any relevant information from these volumes to that. And then I was also trying to think, because your house is a good example, the picture says one thing, but you actually know that it's this, this building. I am sure that there are other images like that, and I'm trying, I haven't given it a lot of thought yet, but trying to figure out a way to sort of crowdsource these pictures with people who either have lived here for some amount of time, a long amount of time, to see if other identification could be given to these that would then would be built into the records for the individual images once they're scanned and uploaded to the Digital Commonwealth. That hasn't been thought through yet fully, but that's where I'm going with that.
Well, and some of the index listings are different. You have some, I mean, there's so much duplication in this, that's where I'm stuck. I have no idea how to get that organized, because you have some on the poster board, you have some on... That was another great thing for that kind of size, that have them on the poster boards. I mean, you know, it's just, and some of it's in, in protective boxes, and some of it isn't. And I don't, I have to call Gaylord at some point and say, "Why? What do you do with a, with a, with a photo album?" You know, I mean, you hide it in, in a box, not very...
Right.
Yeah, it's not very open for you to, for people to come in and look at it, so I, I don't know. We just need to, but I need to clean it out first. There's still a lot of cleaning out to do.
And then also, to that end, when I was in the room looking at more information prior to this phone call, I looked at, as you know, some of the VCR tapes that are in the room, and I contacted the Orleans Camera Shop, I think it is, and they said they can transfer VHS to DVD or electronic format for something like forty dollars, I think it was. I gave Tavi that information. There are two in there that, one by the former director of the library, and another
Kay Bader.
And that may have been done, my guess is, when one or the other of the prior renovations were done. Sort of like, this is net, but like, "What makes Snow Library tick?" or something like that, that, that...
Now, that was another one, yeah.
And so we could have those transferred and have access to them, because we don't have access to them.
Well, I think we need to look at them first to make sure that they're worth having.
So, well, Tavi suggested that Kay Bader's tape in particular, she was around for
Long time.
Fifty-plus years or something.
I have a V, I have a V, a TV that has a little VHS player still, like a little tiny one that we saved, so if you want to take a look at them.
But there's also four, I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
I said I have a, I have a little TV that has a VHS player, and it's still built in, we saved it.
That's probably what we need to do, because there are four of those, and if they're all alike, we only need one.
Right.
So, yeah, that, and that was true of those other ones, those other tapes that were in there, all this. That guy that, that had done the other ones was the president of the Friends and did some of that work. I can't remember his name offhand, but I remember the name, having gone through all the Friends history ten years ago.
Lindsay, you have a question?
Sometimes the TV stations, like a local TV station like Lower Cape, might have one of those machines, and we can do it for free.
Oh.
So that's a place to, a resource we could check out.
Good idea. Probably can even watch it there. It seemed might work better than my little.
You mean, they would translate it for us and put it on to a different medium, or just let us watch it?
I, I mean the translation part. I, I know that my husband works at the Province Town Television, and they have one of those machines that people can come in and actually do that transfer. And I don't know if people have used it recently, but I know that in the past, that was, that was some, a service that was offered.
Oh, God.
But as we know, a VHS tape is totally, for the most part, useless now, so getting it transferred to a different, up-to-date medium is important.
And in a hundred years, they could worry about what they're going to do with that.
Right.
But, again, if there's four of them, you might only need one.
Yes, we don't need to keep a lot more, but...
Then the one other thing I was going to report on was, after our discussion last week, I reached out to the gentleman who made the sign out front, and he told me that their designs are, are intended to last for five years. That sign went up in two thousand eight. So the image that's on the sign is incredibly faded, and you do the math at how far we are from two thousand eight. He said, gave me a quote of four hundred dollars to redo the images in the same color and just get them reposted on the sign.
What sign is that again?
Out front, with the red chip on it.
Oh, just says Snow Library.
Right, not the, and this is just to redo the image, not anything else related to the sign, but the...
Four hundred dollars?
Yeah, so, so if you look on the Friends side of the sign, it's worse than on the Coming From Main...
Because you can't really see it, it's all faded up.
Yeah, so I put that out there, I think it would be worth thinking about. I mentioned it to Tracy, but I wanted to share that.
Okay, I think we can't, we have to, we can't vote on that, right?
No.
All right, all right, we can sign the next meeting.
Well, we're, what would come out?
They'd have to be trustees, or we can ask the Friends.
Or ask the Friends.
We can ask Jerry to ask the Friends. Okay, Jerry will ask the Friends.
Thanks, Jerry. See, there was a reason you stayed. I could suggest we leave it in disrepair as part of our overall narrative.
Yeah.
I will, I'm not ready. You're good.
Yeah, I mean, you're signing the new library, right?
Snap one of the pieces of chain, so it's...
Why didn't you run for the trustees, Jerry?
Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I want to add one thing. The light forth, there is a parade, we will be in the parade. Last year, Jamie, myself, Mark, and Lindsay, and Sue went. It's, we need a lot of people this year. I think it shows great support for the town. Once this passes, if we can get a bigger crowd, so we will be
Sure.